That's not six.
Now it is.
I'd like to open the bills, council, September tenth, regular meeting, open the meeting. First up is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, removals, changes?
Under reports and updates, can we add planner report? Just make that number five. I think the planner would like to report.
Yeah, so, nothing much changed, but now I do have one thing to report, so.
Okay?
So, I take care of one on my desk, because I just want to update in this talk about survey, because I had asked for it to be on the last agenda, but it's on the right and passed away. So, we can either do it under planner update, or we can add it to the agenda.
What's it, what's, do it on the planner?
Okay, and, um.
What are we doing? Talking about the what?
Oh, still the planner report.
Just to make sure, if we could make sure it has its own heading underneath planner, just so in case someone else wants to look it up, they can find it on the agenda.
Sure.
What, the survey?
Oh, yeah.
So, just like this.
Survey update?
Yeah, so like this, it would say planner report, a survey update.
Yes, yes. Sorry, Kim, did you have any?
Nope, that's what we're talking about, we didn't know what we were talking about.
Yeah, good enough.
I have, I don't know what to do here. The meeting minutes, I have a bunch of little changes that I've already marked. We can pull them off, and I can just give you my corrections. Or, it's up to you guys what you want to do. But I would like to pull off, I can tell you which ones.
I think we, I think we pull them off and get them approved and just knock them out.
Okay, so let's do that then.
Just throw them under unfinished business? Is that good?
Yep, I've only got like five little things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which, which ones will we, will we leave? Do you have some on all of them, or just a couple?
Um, I marked it in here, let's see.
Is this from the original one you had, or the ones that we corrected?
Whatever was in this packet is what I used.
So, do you want to throw them up on the, on the board and do them at that time?
It's up to you. Like, I have them bookmarked.
If they're like your ones, then I don't think we probably need to throw up there.
Yeah, and some of them are even more questions. Like, for example, like, I don't think I said I abstained somewhere where I don't, I don't think I did, that kind of stuff. But it's not.
I don't think we need to throw up, and we can look down in the packets, right?
Yeah. I'm going to try to tell you which ones.
Well, let's pull off the ones that you want to make changes to, and if we have some that we can do by an approve, then we'll go into approval and consent.
April fifteenth.
Okay.
April thirtieth.
Okay.
April fifteen, I'm sorry, May fifteenth, but the, the regular meeting session. And May thirtieth.
Okay.
And I think I'm good with the rest of them.
Okay. So, we'll pull off April fifteenth, April thirtieth, May fifteenth, and May thirtieth, and move those to unfinished business? Is that good? Mayor?
Yes.
May fifteenth, the regular meeting.
I'm sorry, May fifteenth, the regular meeting, not the budget.
Okay.
And then we can go ahead and approve the other ones in the consent?
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah. Mayor, did you have the change?
Yeah, I didn't do that change. I was just confirming with everyone else. Nick, you're good?
Hang on. Uh, I'm sorry, I went back to look at those minutes and I lost my, I don't think so. I think that was it. Planning on release, yep, we're good.
Okay, Nick?
Good, good.
Okay, and then on, for D, the consent agenda, on one and two, we're going to, in addition to approve bond release for Amber Meadows, add the words "and acceptance of roads" for both one and two, for the bond release of Amber Meadows and the bond release of Tullamore. Adding the words "acceptance of roads."
I just noticed something. Can I look at something real quick? Do we have a resolution in those packets for accepting the roads, or is it just the application? I'm just realizing that's coming to me down.
There's a resolution.
Is there a resolution there?
There's a petition, we can come back at.
Sign petition?
There's a petition, we can accept the petition, then we can come back and do the resolution.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay?
Because usually we accept roads by a resolution, right? And we give it a resolution number, and then we log it into our books.
Right.
So, whatever you want, whatever Spencer thinks is correct, I just want to make sure that.
I think we can, we can accept them tonight, and then we'll do a resolution, ratifying acceptance into document, but that, you can even do that on the work sessions, since it's not a material item. Accept agenda. Yeah.
So, if somebody can just add acceptance of the petition for roads in that modified his motion.
Okay, so I'm going to amend, or make a request to amend the mayor's motion and change the words ex, um, accept, uh, accept road acceptance to petition for road acceptance and bond release.
Was he making a motion for that, or is he just adding that to the agenda? I don't believe there was a motion on the table for that.
Wasn't a motion.
They're just adding, just adding something to the.
Amending the title.
So, we're, so we're just, so we're good?
Yeah, you just add them up.
Okay.
So, it's petition of acceptance of roads. Is that right?
Petition to accept roads and release, and, and release bond.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next up, we have public comment. Do we have anyone to speak? And if you are here to speak, just a reminder, state your name, address, you'll have three minutes. Kim, you want to put the phone over there? All right, we have a few people here. First one I have is Tom Koots.
I was just here to answer any questions on the sidewalk swapping, I remember G, business G two.
Okay, great, thank you, Tom. All right, and then John Jones?
No, I'm visiting.
Oh, I've seen, no, 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 sorry, my bad, I'm not reading the whole word. CJ Delling.
Yeah, I'm just here to answer any questions involving the bond release.
Okay, that's great.
We're, yeah, okay.
Okay, then we have no one else here to speak, so. Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing. Number one, whole public hearing to consider for approval of temporary use permit, number one nine dash one two three zero zero, for construction office and storage trailer at Marvin Gardens. Discussion consideration of TUP number one nine dash one two three zero zero, construction office and storage trailer at Marvin Gardens. And it'll be one hit and a half.
You'll need to open the public hearing first before you can do discussion and consideration.
Open up a public hearing?
So.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do we have anybody?
Nobody signed up?
Nobody signed up.
Okay, need a motion closed.
Sure.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Quick to the room.
Sorry, sorry, Nick.
Get out of here quick. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's in favor? All right, we're ahead.
All right, so should, should I get to just get started describing this? Okay, so, there is Marvin Gardens, they're under construction, and the contractor wants to have one office trailer, and it should actually say storage trailers, plural, there's supposed to be nine of them, for the construction materials for Marvin Gardens. This is a very standard alignment, and there should be, if you have the TUP itself, there should also be an accompanying site plan of what they proposed to put the storage trailers and the office trailer, and they're very much in the center of the site. So, just looking at this, except for maybe showing some conditions that lighting should be directed towards, you know, inwards towards the construction site, and just, you know, any noise, any further noise restrictions than the noise ordinance to stay, which are something like seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock in the night, and then starting at eight o'clock in the weekend, something like that. If you wanted to discuss more stringent noise regulations, that's fine, but otherwise, this is very much, I think this follows the three, you know, the three findings of fact where post-temporary use will not materially endanger the public welfare and safety, it's very much in the middle of the property, so post-temporary use will not have a substantial negative effect on adjoining properties, that's what the recommendations on lighting and noise regulations are, and the proposed temporary use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and preserve the spirit. I think that noise pays for itself, and that this ICU has already proven, you know, construction is part of the development, so.
We're hit, I'm only seeing one trailer on this diagram, so are they going to cluster them all around each other in the center?
So, there are two areas, there's one, there's, okay, we're looking at this one, right?
You can barely read it, it says storage.
Okay, so there's, there's three, yeah, I guess, I guess this could have been blown up.
Or highlighted.
But there's three over here, and four over here in the center area that looks like a pair of lumps, and then over.
Where the bubbles are, is that, oh, okay.
Oh, it's the bubbles?
Yeah, the bubbles, and then they're over down to the left of it, there's the office trailer, the big rectangle, and then the two smaller storage trailers, which are the smaller rectangles.
See them? So, here and here?
Those are the two bubbles, right?
Yeah, here and here?
And then over to the left, like over here, where the office trailer, and the two smaller storage trailers.
Okay, but over here and here where the bulk of them are going to be.
Hold it up again, sorry. Where's the other trailer?
Seven trailers are going in these two bubbles, and two trailers are going up to the office, that is that big square rectangle.
Mine looks different than yours, I think it's in reverse, that's why I'm.
Upside down?
Yeah. On the PDF, it's upside down.
Pick your computer up and turn it over.
Bubble and bubble.
Okay, that's the one I was looking for, thank you.
So, they're already, they're taking a lot of that land down, because that's going to be at street level, right? So, they're putting the trailers up there before or after? Because even though they'll be, they'll be plain view, right?
Right, they'll be, they'll be in view from the street, but I just went out there last week, and they did preserve the buffers, so they won't be in view of the neighbors that are adjacent to wedding to chase them when they're at work.
Questions from the council, concerns? Everyone good? So, we need to go through the recommendations. Someone want to do that, take that?
Sure. I will go ahead and make a motion that we.
Got it.
That we approve the application for a temporary use permit. Sorry, I'm looking for the number.
One nine dash one two three zero zero, TUP one nine dash one two three zero zero.
All right.
It's right there.
Oh, thank you. TUP one nine dash one two three zero zero, temporary use office trailer for construction storage at Marvin Gardens, and with the following, having found the following to be, findings of facts to be true, that the proposed temporary use will not materially endanger the public health, welfare, and safety, the proposed temporary use will not have a substantial negative effect on adjoining properties, and the proposed temporary use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and preserve its spirit.
Did you want to put in the conditions?
Oh, along with the following.
Those findings provided the following conditions.
Right, so I'll amend that to say, having found the following to be true.
That's it.
If built, if built in accord with the conditions provided by village planner. And then you want me to list the conditions?
Yep.
Okay. The conditions being that the temporary use permit shall expire on March tenth, two thousand and twenty, unless an extension is applied for and received prior to the expiration date, with the condition lighting shall be in conformity with a Marvin light ordinance, and shall be directed away from any single-family homes, and the condition that at the end of the construction, the office trailer and the storage shall be removed. Oh, and number four, the temporary office shall only be used for coordinating construction, not as a sales office, or commercial tenants, or for lots in the residential portion.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I, sorry, yeah.
Motion passes unanimously. For the record, I need to start the meeting out, we, we were, we mentioned that we do have a quorum, but we didn't mention who's not here in attendance.
Yes.
So, should we make that official?
Yes.
Okay, so, just for the record, we have Mayor Protim, Mr. Benzere, and Councilwoman, Mayor Scoot, and the Councilwoman.
What's her name? Tim Danberg.
The, missing is Councilman Robert Hs, for the record. Okay, so next up, we have Rohit, his approval of the TUP.
He's already doing that.
Two there, did that, was that just double?
Yeah, it's just double.
Okay, so they approved that twice, okay, sorry about that. All right, so next, we're going to reports and updates. First up is administrative report, Amber Meadows Trail payment from Polte.
So, actually, I want to report that CJ has brought the check with him tonight, so when the bonds get released.
He's not handing it over to him.
You want it?
So, hopefully, that will be addressed in a couple of minutes.
Hey.
Any questions?
Yeah.
None of that.
Just to make things easier, so he doesn't have to stick around, can we, is it ready to sign? Is there someone for me to sign, to make it official?
We just have to do it on what's inside.
And Rohit will process everything. There's no money that we're actually holding, so they, we'll just send a letter to him.
Okay, I just, if I need to sign something, or whatever, so they're in us there. Okay, any questions?
Any questions on Amber Meadows? The, the next thing I want to talk to you about, about was the village hall sign. As you see, that, you know, the sign has fallen down out there, and we want to get a replacement. We wanted to get something a little bigger, and we wanted to also have the address on there, because we have a lot of people that have a problem finding us, so I provided some images for you all to.
But that'll be what it looks like.
Well, that's the information that'll be on there. I mean, I can change the font size and like, how it, I don't know if we need to actually have Marvin, North Carolina on there, if we have town, Village of Marvin.
Do we need Village of Marvin and Village of Marvin? I think we've got it on the.
We can take that off if y'all want to. It's up to you, to you guys.
I feel like this should be bigger than.
The, the seal should be bigger, and then just have the address and the number?
Yeah, because we've got Village of Marvin, North Carolina, so you can take that off and just do the address, like.
How about, how about Village of Marvin and replace the Village of Marvin again, with town hall?
We'll do that.
Village Hall?
Village Hall.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we put that address, like, on a separate bar of its own? Maybe?
Like, just kind of hanging down?
I don't know, like, that's just a rough idea, but the idea that it will infringe on the sign?
On the seal?
Yeah, on the seal seems anticlimactic.
In essence.
I'm so excited to see it.
Like this, yeah.
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 Something like that. I'm sure there's a bunch of configurations, but.
Have it separate, so have the seal separate, because I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
That's nice, and then have it.
And if y'all are fine with that, I'll just pull it out of contingency, we'll end up doing a budget amendment later for it, we've got money to do it, I just want to make sure y'all are okay with this style.
I've, I've even seen signs like that, where they've got like more of a, a headboard on the top.
Okay.
All right, and there isn't another hanging of any?
I mean, like, so vice versa, this.
Something like that, like, that is, this isn't hanging.
That kind of looks like a bong. I mean, it does.
More than likely, this would be square, I would assume anyways. I don't think it would actually be cir, like, circle.
Aw. I like the round one.
I mean, we can do a round one, but it's going to cost more if they have to cut the circle out, so.
Because I think, Kim probably, and I might agree, that we just don't want to see it look like a contractor sign.
Yeah, so if they can make it a little, yeah, find out what the cost difference is.
Okay. We'll do it.
We've got quotes for these right now, that ranging anywhere from three hundred to a thousand, so we'll try to keep it within that realm.
What size are you looking for?
We had, we had quoted three by four, but with this one, we're probably doing more of a square, so that was a three by three.
Okay.
And they're all within our sign ordinance, so.
Oh, right.
We are following our orders.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's all I have for administrative report. We, we've been pretty in-house working on various things, so.
Roads?
Well, are we going to talk about roads separately?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on there.
What about the, I remember, recall, I'm sure a lot of the people in the town have gotten their email saying the survey's ready.
I'll talk about that in the report.
That's another, okay. That's all I had, is where's questions go. Oh, other than when the roads are starting, but that's in the road section.
Yeah, I mean, that's next.
Okay. I don't have anything else for anyone else. Nick, you're good? All right, moving on?
For this?
Oh, yeah, for Christine, right now.
No, are you doing roads under you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's next up?
Yeah.
So, no, that's it.
All right, finished there? Next up, we have road report.
So, go ahead and kill this one.
Oh, boy.
As you know, the last council meeting, Mary had, Mary Syke had discussed the roundabout for. Irrigation, couldn't think of that word for a second, irrigation, and then DOT came back and said that we had to have subdrains. I had contacted Mike, he said that it was discussed with the previous planner. I don't know that to be true, I can't find any records of it. I have talked with, I have sent an email to DOT to see if there's any way we can get out of it. They have not responded yet, still waiting a response from them. Worst-case scenario, this is the quote we got for the subdrains, it's right at ten thousand dollars. Mary Syke has ten thousand dollars in her budget this year for roundabout plantings, so we would just have to take that money out, and she would just have to do plantings next year.
I mean.
So, who said they talked to the former administrator?
Mike Walden, but I can't confirm or deny that.
I'll make a quick phone call, and why wouldn't have that been put on that? I mean.
I thought it was all part of, right, the construction, is that what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, I mean, we talked about it from the very beginning, that we know we're going to have foliage in there, so we need to run just a blank line. Anything else, you would think that they would tell us what we needed to do, so they're now putting it back on us after everything's complete?
They said that they did run the conduit, we didn't pay anything for, for the conduit, but.
Yes, we did.
Mike said we didn't, and I can't find a check where we, we issued any payment for a conduit. So, apparently, it was discussed during the village shutdown, it was during that time that we were shut down. I don't know the details.
This goes back years before that.
Then, so nobody was talking to anybody then, so that's, that's, that's not right.
And Mike also said that it was discussed prior to the construction plan, so it, it may have predated anybody that's here, or was here at the time.
I mean, I don't, I don't know about what, last year, but I can tell you that when the construction plan was provided for the council to look at, I was on the planning board at that point, and I had a meeting over at village hall, and they presented their plans, this was, this was part of that package, and they had asked us at the time whether we were willing to, of course, pay for some of that conduit and infrastructure, and, and the council responded that they were, but ever since that discussion, my assumption as they constructed it was that that was all in our plan somewhere.
The subdrains? And not the drains, like, I've never heard anything about the drains.
No, you're right, I haven't heard that.
Nothing about a drain. I've heard conduit, and I thought we paid for conduits, because we told them that we wanted irrigation, so.
And by conduit, you mean the piping?
The piping, yeah.
All it is, all it is, it's a blank line that allows you to run lines into the center, knowing that that's, we were going to irrigate, but.
Or provide electric.
When DOT comes in and does a roundabout, do they not automatically put drainage in for that?
According to Mike, they didn't, and that was on us, but I have no record of anybody discussing.
So, they expect us to be the engineers.
Mike Walden.
Who's he with?
AMT.
I mean, he, somebody needs to come in here, we all need to have a conversation, because that's, I mean, I've, I mean, I haven't heard that, and I've been listening to this for over two years, and.
And civil design plans, when they're, when they're approved, one of the things they require to provide is whether or not they need drainage, depending on how much improvised service they're putting in. So, if anyone was going to know that they needed drainage provisions, it's true, and then them, and the engineer, not us.
Even if we just have irrigation, you're going to have runoff when it rains, so where's it going to go?
Exactly. And I've got an email into DOT, Lee Ainsworth, I'm waiting on him.
We need, I would say, we need to have a meeting with AMT and DOT and Chaplain.
This is, this is worst-case scenario, though, that's where we're at, just wanted to let you know, I'm not asking for any action or anything.
Take this as the cost that they're asking us for?
To do, to put the drains in afterwards, instead of doing it while they were constructing it, right?
Right, excavation.
Yeah, okay, so, good, nobody's happy about that.
Whoa.
Remind them that we're not the engineers on this, and we were expecting that to be part of.
Have we reached out to, which, which planner, Laura?
Yes.
Can we reach out to Laura?
I have not reached out to her.
Let's reach out to Laura, let's reach out to Chris, and let's just ask them, and again, if it was supposedly during the shutdown, nobody was doing business then, so it could have been them.
And I'll go once, one year even before that, because we've been looking at plans for those roundabouts since 2014, they were approved, I think, finally in 2016, so in 2016 or 20, when Lisa was here, was when the meeting for, where they presented the civil design plans, and that was part of the discussion. So, Lisa Thompson should have some information on that, too.
I can ask her as well, thank you. I'll try to get some information back before the next meeting.
Well, if you discussed it, it would have been in the minutes, wouldn't it?
Should have been. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was, it was a standalone meeting by itself, I think in July of 2016, and it was the only thing on the agenda.
However, you don't discuss things that you don't know about.
We can check those minutes.
You know what I mean? We're, we're not going to be discussing, oh, by the way, did you check the drain, it's, because how do we know that they need a drain? That's what, that's where I'm having.
Mike said that, and I've asked Mike, too, for the, a copy of the specs manual, the portion in their specs manual where it says that we need it, and he said it wouldn't be in their spec manual, it would be in their encroachment agreement, so I'm still having that conversation with DOT.
Okay, so, that's the, that's the other thing I'm not understanding. It, it is, an encroachment agreement, it is their land, right, that they've improved. They consulted with us, and we provided them with our input, right, but their own manuals tell us that those roads and all of the, everything in the right of way belongs to them, so if they approved the fact that we would be putting planting in the middle, what encroachment are they talking about? I don't understand.
We don't have, we don't have one yet.
Okay.
It's separate. Irrigation encroachment is different. We, we could plant things today, but you can irrigate them, so it's, they, you have to get an irrigation encroachment, but they told us maybe.
That's what they're looking for, is an irrigation encroachment? Yeah, that should have all been part, I promise you, but that was all discussed.
That's what the lines were for.
I know, which we told them that, and they knew that.
In fact, we made it very clear, we want foliage and stuff, we're going to plan to do, we didn't know what, but we knew for electrical and for water.
We, honestly, Mary and I have been planning, we were ready to pull the trigger on it, so we actually met with Union County to talk about running the lines, and Mike came to the meeting, and we just kind of, everybody stopped, and we had everybody in that office in, in the county.
Except between DOT and the engineers, somebody should have said to us, you know, when you do this, you're going to have to have.
Well, they did, they did say back in May that we had to have a DOT irrigation encroachment agreement, and I emailed the guy who's going to do that several times, he never responded, and I don't know if this is why he didn't respond or not, just one more thing.
This was before it was built?
This is this year.
So, we can start planning.
But when I talked to the engineer or somebody, he mentioned a video of nine thousand dollars, that's what it would have been if they had done it during the process, so I don't think the difference is that much, if it's ten thousand now, so I think we should feel good about that, that it's not going to be twice as much because it's already built, but just, just more.
It's a matter of principle, Mary.
I know.
I found, to your point, I found an email, and I, I don't understand it, and I was trying to, $9,400 is what it was, because there was a quote in there for $19,000, but it was with a hydrant, so the, the estimate for the subdrains at the time of construction was $9,400. So you're right, it is not a huge.
So wait, where did that email from?
This was an email from Philip Moxley to Planner.
When?
When? July 3rd. It says, "The hydrant relocation is not Marvin's responsibility, total without hydrant is $19,400," using the North, NC DOT bid averages, it would estimate around $9,400, I'll check with some other local roundabouts as well. We will need to know fairly soon if the village wants to move forward with the work.
Yeah, we're still.
When were they, they were done last, when were they finished, October?
They, they started construction.
Was there a response to that?
I, I can't find a response to it, but we were closed during that time.
I know.
All right.
That, that's all I have for roads. I know they did start construction on resurfacing.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they finished Woodland Forest and they're on Providence Road Estates right now.
Oh, you just drove by there?
Okay, so that started when?
Last week.
Okay. I didn't see anything, that's why I was worried, it was after Labor Day, I heard.
Yeah, they did start, and they're done with Woodland Forest now, so you can go see what it will look like when they're done.
How is everybody, have we heard from anybody?
We haven't heard from anyone, which is good.
Has anybody driven over there and looked?
I have, yes.
How's it look? Good?
Yeah.
Awesome.
It's very nice.
Okay.
And between the time that they're finished and the time they start, there's gonna be a gravel layer, so, you know, for anyone listening, just don't, don't worry about that, it's not the final product, it's just.
Are we communicating with the neighborhoods, because I know, I keep getting from my neighborhood, when is it, you know, what?
I don't think they're telling us.
They're not telling us what order it is, we just know that, we knew that Woodland Forest was gonna be first the week before they started, and that Providence Road Estates would be second.
So I can't say the process has started of the however many roads we're gonna do, so it should be relatively.
They told us that Firethorn would be next after Providence Road Estates, but that is tentative, all the order is tentative.
We don't wanna put anything out there that may not be right.
Okay.
So far, what they've told us has been correct, but they said everything is tentative, they being NC DOT, because contractor can just switch it around whenever they need to.
And we do have our engineer going out and inspecting weekly, they're not doing it every day, but they are doing it weekly, so.
So did you look closely at how the curves and the road come together?
Well, Woodland Forest is not curved, I can't, that's that one.
Okay.
Firethorn is the only one that has curve and gutter.
Okay.
So we will know last.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Thank you, Christina, for that. Next up, we have Planning Board Chair Report, Chairman John Jones.
I have nothing new to report, other than, you know, since our, you know, we spoke during the work session.
Yes.
I will say that, I said nothing, the second.
Public involvement.
Public involvement meeting regarding the possible rezoning on, at Bond Grove and Providence Road was held yesterday afternoon, well attended by the public, and what, I think, I was there, went relatively well versus the first involvement meeting, which was here, because they had much more space and it was cooler and everything. There was still a lot of conversation, it went for the full two hours.
So what's the process going forward? They've had the two public meetings, then what first?
Then, whenever they have all of, Rohe had probably answered better, but we discussed it this morning, tell me exactly the process, but they've got a list of stuff that they have to provide to the village, which then for, for the planning board to review, and so far, they don't have that stuff in yet, or it hasn't showed up.
Almost all of it, they're missing their traffic impact analysis, which is the most important, one of the, well, one of the most important things that they're missing, so I've asked them to postpone the next planning board meeting until they have that, so if they had that, it would have been next week, but since they don't have that, the next planning board meeting is postponed until they get that, which I don't know when that will be. So, but I will let you know when that, when that comes in, and then they'll have their planning board meeting, which is advised in our ordinance to be a joint council and planning board meeting, so we should consider that when that time comes.
And I did, this is a little bit different process, and we had a similar development project last year around this time with a university that was coming in, that was a quasi judicial process. I know y'all got a lot of questions from council, from the public, and we had to be careful with what we stated out and to, to our citizens, and I'd asked our attorney to just provide a quick update on you all, so you knew what, how you could respond, what the process was from a standpoint of getting information out to the public, so.
Okay, and I'm gonna start with the last one, the last one was conditional use zoning with a conditional use permit. That is a quasi judicial hearing, those are the ones where you, kinda like we did earlier, where you open it up, you have a public hearing, and it's simple on a temporary easement for trailers, I mean, a temporary permit for trailers, it's complicated when it's on a big project, because with the quasi judicial, all of your communications from the deciding board is supposed to be at the public hearing. If not, it's called ex parte communications, and you're supposed to disclose it, and then you make your findings a fact. So complicated and hard to do that the legislator was like, okay, we've gotta come up with something else. Unfortunately, they kept pretty much the same name to bring more confusion. This is conditional zoning. With conditional zoning, it goes through a legislative process, that means it goes through a regular zoning process, and you can have open communication, open dialogue, without all the restraints and formalities of the quasi judicial. So with that, you're talking about the conditions. With the conditional zoning, you actually create a new zoning district for that parcel with the conditions that are agreed upon by the property owner, the applicant, and the town, but because it's legislative, you're able to communicate better and have a more open dialogue, so it goes through the process, it's not quick, but it's designed to have conditions, that conditions have to be reasonably related to the development and the impact, because they're always something special. Each piece of property is unique, so you try to find conditions that are gonna protect the adjacent property or protect the town and its unique zoning plans and criteria in that area. So it goes through the legislative process, and you will put all of those conditions into any approval or disapproval that this council decides, and then that becomes a new district with those conditions being a part of it and running with the land. Does that make sense? So it's conditional zoning, not conditional use, and that, that one use makes everything a lot more complicated. So this is a better process, it's just newer, and people aren't quite used to it, but it's a better process, and it's supposed to streamline it.
And I don't know if this, when you use the word use, that's what can be specifically put in that location, that's, we can decide on that or no?
With the conditional zoning, some of your conditions could be to restrict uses, you're, it's still gonna have a general, it's gonna be a conditional zoning, but it's gonna have an underlying zoning classification, and that zoning classification say it allows 20 uses. Well, if there are four or five of them, that they may work in this quadrant of the town or the village, but not over here, then you can wipe those four out, or five, or 10.
And if it's okay with specified, we currently have an ordinance though, that lays out what the uses are in our commercial corridor district.
Yeah, so it's already gonna be those.
It follows that.
Yeah, so you can eliminate them from there, but they're there already.
You're already gonna have a underlying zoning classification, so it's gonna say, in this zoning, you can only have these 12 uses, but if three of those don't work, they're all gonna be similar, and they all should work with commercial, but there may be one or two that are more intense, that don't work for the site, and that you'll have to look at and you could eliminate.
Like a drive-through, for example.
Right.
For example, like, I guess for this case, for example, there are 42 uses that are allowed in the CCCD, and one of them is a grocery store, and since Barbie Gardens is opening up the street, we might restrict them from having a grocery store there, it's just a little too small a parcel. Incidentally, drive-throughs are already, drive-through restaurants are already restricted for that, that conditional district.
It's a great example about the grocery store, and for that, you would say because the parcel's too small, because the other one could go away, but because of the size and parameters, you don't want it encroaching too much on the neighbors to get down a proper buffer.
Have they submitted to design and development standards or a list of conditions yet with that proposal?
No, they've just submitted a site plan so far, and they've gone through a few revisions of that.
Okay.
But the design and development standards are largely going to be based on our CCCD ordinance, where the difference is that we've only dealt with ICD so far, and individual conditional districts don't have an underlying basis for that conditional district. Individual, the I, means you start from scratch, basically.
Except that they did here, so our old ICD ordinance did refer back to the conditional corridor district, so it said, yeah, it was, that's the way it was written. I know it's unusual, you would think it would be kind of free and open, but in fact, what we did, there was a certain fear that by leaving it too wide open, it would allow for anything to walk through the door, so what they did is they made the commercial corridor the baseline for the individual conditional, which by the way, only complicated it, to Chaplin's point, so that's why the individual conditional district became more of a headache than just establishing a conditional district.
So you will still sit for this board and look at conditions, and because you can have more dialogue, if you aren't there when it comes up, you can look at it further and really think through the process, but you do have to have reasonable conditions. They have to be related to the development and its impact on the neighbors and the community.
So Rohe, you do want us to have a joint meeting the next planning meeting?
I would highly recommend it, yes. The public also would like that.
Okay. I'm trying, trying, you know, our original, in the, in the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we did this, but I'm not sure, do you remember that we revised the code so that they would provide like a preliminary, it was optional for the, I think, for the developer to provide the council with a preliminary plan and get general feedback?
Yes, that.
Did we do that?
No, that did not occur, but as you said, it was optional. I basically relayed to them what the council's sentiment is on this type of development, and they decided that they would not choose that option.
Okay.
It also has a fee to deal with it, and that helps, you know, maybe enlighten why they didn't do it.
It goes either way, just as long as they knew the option was there, I just thought, didn't wanna make.
Yeah, I, I did make clear that the option was there, and since it's an option, they, they just didn't do it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, moving on, next up, we had the PR and G Chair Report.
Well, hang on one second, I'm sorry.
That was the planning board chair report.
Right?
The survey, I forgot.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get there yet, we're.
So with the drainage, whatever, I was, we had never intended to do anything with the median that's in between the two roundabouts, and it looks pretty bad, and I had actually asked the DOT, I said, could we plant something in there, and he said, no, we don't want plants in there, and I didn't really want plants either, but I said, what about just putting some river rock or something in there to make it look better versus weeds? And he said, as long as they're not very big, but it was just something else to consider, this is what I would suggest, make copies for everybody so you guys can share. These, some of these may be too big for him, he just doesn't, if, if someone, a car runs into it, he doesn't want them to lose their oil pan or something, I guess, I don't know, but.
My concern is these coming out into the, because people are gonna hit the median, the center, and this is gonna come up and end up on the road eventually, and we're gonna be dealing with rocks on the road.
Yeah, this is another option, this is the one we have at the park, it's a smaller stone, but I, I think it's still attractive. I guess it is possible, but I've noticed there's a lot of trash and stuff accumulating, and eventually, I think we're gonna have to address that maintenance as well. Is someone picking up the trash, someone, if there are, there are rocks that go out. I would think there's nobody walking there, so it's just if somebody runs up onto it, that I think that the rocks might go someplace, but it's just, it's just an option.
They won't accept any plants at all?
He, he just didn't really want to do anything, I guess it was line of sight or something that he was concerned about, he didn't really explain, but he did say that this would be a possibility, and I think it would dress it up, it would lower the maintenance versus the weeds that are there now. It's, I don't think it would be very expensive, I looked at a ton of rock, it's $150, so I think if we can't get the drainage incident soon, I think it would help with the public perception that we understand that it's a bit unsightly.
So if I don't mind, you know, we actually have a roadway landscaping provision and standard in the landscape ordinance, just so you know. So you wanna be sure that you look at that, because we have to follow our ordinance, much like the sign. So if you look in our landscaping 151.46, landscaping elements for development, and it's section two, roadway median landscaping, just be sure that, that whatever we're looking at meets with those same provisions.
And this, really tonight, I was just bringing it up as an idea, as a, you know, something we could do until we get the, the roundabout.
So did you guys talk about it in your meeting?
No, we haven't, and it's more of, if, if you guys have no interest in it, I wasn't even gonna bring it up, and not even waste our time on it, but if it was something you wanted us to pursue, since this roundabout issue is, is where it is, then.
Speaking for one, to your point, it's already an ISO or and stuff, and it's like, I think we should do something, but I'm, I'm concerned that, that it's, that it's that choice and what, what the ramifications are. We spend that money, put it there, and then all of a sudden, we're finding that we're sending someone out there on a weekly basis to clean up the rocks, and it becomes a road hazard, you know, more than anything else.
Well, I mean, you've got two, don't you have, I mean, you've got some curb there, so if you dig it down a little bit, and you kinda make it even with the curb, hopefully they're not gonna be flying out. Yeah, well, again, we'll, we'll look into it more, but I just wanted to throw that out, because I, I didn't know what the, I was afraid, because what we had heard initially is that there was almost $9,500 while they were constructing, I thought it was gonna come in at $20,000 or something like that. So the $10,000 actually sounded better. Okay, so we'll just.
Thanks for trying to make it look nice.
Well, there's been a couple people complaining, but anyway, I just wanted to mention, Barbie sent this out to you guys, we're having a, Mike's having a garden tour. If you guys are interested, this is our first public event, we have a couple of gardens, and in the park, it's gonna be on the tour. It's free to the public, and we don't have, but it, it does help go to our certification, it gives us five points, that's initially why we did it, but it's also to show people that a wildlife-friendly garden is not just a bunch of brambles.
That's very cool.
I actually.
Just totally shocked me, I didn't know.
I, I actually, just for the record, and this will be nice to look at if I get there, I think it's the 21st, you said?
The 21st, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I have a coffee, but I will say for the community, and for those that don't know, I did go on at Kim's urging, that I, I went on the website today, and most of the stuff to become a habitat for wildlife, most of the stuff you're already doing in your homes. The only one I checked no on is the chemicals that I'm using, I'm not sure if they're organic, I'm not sure, I haven't talked to my landscaper, but everything else I was able to check off, but it's 20 bucks, signed up, no problem.
That's my next thing.
Very cool. It's kinda like what we did with mares, remember, I don't know, does anyone remember mares, when we used to go to all the different horse farms? Yeah, that's really kinda neat, very cool.
We're hoping to do this more often, because we only have five people, you know, we're spread pretty thin as far as man is going, so hopefully it'll grow, because we do have some beautiful gardens and things. Anyway, this is our brochure again, and it just, we are so close, we're 20 points.
Get certified.
We are only 20 points away from being certified, and every point counts, we have a couple of schools we're looking on, which are five points, but I know Kim has, and Joe has, it's only one point, but, you know, every.
All those points add up.
That's right, bulldog, he's like.
Stressing out.
He's a bulldog, he's a bulldog. But anyway, I would encourage you, just, just like Joe said, if you look through the requirements, which is on the back of our brochure, it's just about any garden that can qualify. And the last thing is, we have our first educational program, it's gonna be October 15th.
Maybe snakes alive.
They're gonna have real live snakes too.
They being natural.
Yes, yeah, what do you call them, now I don't know what you call them, but he, he is.
Snake wrangler.
And it's gonna be at the farm, and so we're excited about that as well.
Copperhead.
His main thing is, probably there's, there was a article in Wall Street Journal this summer that scared everybody to death because snake bites have increased, and you hear things all the time, but, you know, the majority of snakes, they're actually good for, you know, controlling rodents and things like that, so, and if nothing else, just to, I, I believe that if you can get to the kids early, they, they learn from their parents to be afraid of snakes, and maybe this way it'll break that chain, or whatever.
Thanks for your.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Planner Report with a survey update at some point.
Great. So the survey was made live yesterday. So the survey was made live yesterday, and you need your postcard to get your household code to access the survey. But some people are saying they haven't received it yet, and they have been mailed out. So if you haven't received it yet, just keep your eye on mail, and they'll be here in the next couple of days.
And they're being mailed from Charlotte?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they, so they've actually been, it's actually not only open, but they've been mailed out already?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's potential that someone, we could already have responses at this point?
If people have received them already, yeah, the postcards.
Okay. So I'm, I just wanted to, one, I just wanted a general update to make sure, because I didn't know, some of you know, my aunt passed away at the last, just before the last meeting. So I wasn't at the last meeting, but I had asked the survey be on here. I didn't even know it was going to be on, anyway. Just because I wanted to be sure I understood what was going on with it. I guess you guys all set the open and closed dates already?
September 9th, which is yesterday, and October 7th is the closed date.
Okay, so I spoke to Rohit and Christina today, because I just wanted to be 100% sure that the contractor, I guess COG, had figured out how to make sure, they had figured it all out, and they had, were able to generate a code that was unique to every household and how they did that, so that's good. The only other thing that I think, managed to get a final draft copy, and I read over the draft, thanks for sending it today. The only thing that I'm gonna mention, I don't, it might be too late to do anything about it now, but, and I don't know if you all remember this, but this, that meeting, we had something on the agenda. I was actually not well, wasn't gonna make that meeting. But you all needed a third vote. So I came, but I wasn't too well. And I thought I had mentioned a, making sure that we had questions on the scale of commercial development. And I think that one of those questions got in there, right? We were talking about the size of the development.
Number 13 is that.
Right, and it could be my fault. But I, so I just wanna go on record as saying that the only concern I've had is that, as I spoke to Rohit today, throughout our current district and our ordinances and our land use plan, it's been a bit of a thorn in my side for years and years and years now, is that the both documents consistently refer to small-scale retail. And small-scale retail doesn't have its own definition. And so we have relied on the survey in the past and the Institute of, sorry, the International Council of Shopping Centers to put parameters around that term, because that's what everyone was comfortable with. So I guess I, when I was talking about scale in that meeting, I was hoping to see that question with regard to neighborhood scale versus community scale versus, which one am I missing? Regional scale development. And it could be my fault, maybe I, I wasn't with it, maybe I didn't relate it. My only concern about not having that question there is that, how do we then define this? Or at least I wanna make note of it for the planning going forward, that this term that we like to use called small-scale retail is very ambiguous, and it has zero context around it. So, for example, does it mean that you can have 400,000 square feet of little shops, right? Or does it mean, you know, that it has to be small in terms of overall gross floor area, and then also small shops? It's hard to know. So by having that, so by adopting that, those standards from, the, the standards from the International Council of Shopping Centers, we were using a complete context around that term. So trying to explain it in a nutshell. Those four terms that we generally tend to use don't just refer to how big or small a shop is, but how big or small the development is. And I thought, I didn't bring it, I meant to, to give you copies, all of them. But the larger something is, each of those definitions is really about the market, right? Is, is what market are you trying to reach with your development? So the smaller something is, if it's, if it's a small development, I think it's 50,000 square feet tops, then essentially what the industry standard says is that you're only trying to reach a market, a neighborhood market, as opposed to 150,000 square feet, the community market, and then over 300,000, I think it is, is more like a regional scale development. So all I'm saying is that when you go to, because I know that the purpose of this survey is to write the land use plan, right, or to finalize it, I'm a little afraid, given that we're gonna have that term everywhere, that small-scale retail term, and unless it's defined somehow, we haven't set, we, we, we'll not have set decent limits around scale of development, not just size of a unit, but scale. And I just wanted to be sure that, yeah, I just wanted to kinda mention that. I guess it's too late, I was thinking maybe we could quickly insert it, but if it's already been out and some people have already answered the questionnaire, I don't know that we can make that change or not.
But I mean, I mean, to me, it's a, it's a survey question. People could answer it on a survey, but eventually, with the land use plan, the council will decide what is a small scale, what isn't a small scale.
Right.
The council will make the definition of how many square feet is they consider to be small scale, so I mean, it's.
As long as it's a, but it's a footnote, right? Like up until now, we have said, well, we want the residents to tell us, at least on the planning board we did, we wanted the residents to tell us what they found acceptable in terms of scale. And so without that questionnaire, it's difficult to kind of infer what a citizen, what citizens in general are in favor of and what they're not. No doubt, at the end of the day, the council's gonna make a decision regardless, but.
Because I'm never not sure how many, you know, how many people out there really know what's 20,000 square feet, what's 50,000 square, you know? It's a picture in their mind, even, really, it's a.
We kinda, we kinda, we kinda touched on that in the survey, did we not?
There is that question.
50,000 is a Harris Teeter.
Right, that shows the picture.
It shows a picture of that. So it kinda gives them an idea of what size they're gonna be in. I don't think that's.
And that's per use, right? Like those, those, and I'm glad we did that, and I was happy to see that. We did the photos per use. In the old survey, we also did that with neighborhood development. For example, Wedding, I think we took photos of Weddington, their little shopping center is, you know, a neighborhood, and we showed a picture of that, that's a neighborhood development. And then regional scale would be something like, you know, Lake Me, which intends to grab patrons from, you know, five-mile radius or more. Again, in the end, sure, the council and planning board, they make those decisions. It just, it was an opportunity to grab resident input on what they think is a good scale. But that ship may have sailed already, so.
Well, Nick brings a good point in that, you know, the council will eventually decide what is allowed where. And another thing that might calm your concern is that the size of the parcel will limit how big the commercial can be. And this roughly 10-acre parcel that's supposed to be rezoned, the most that could fit is a neighborhood parcel. And then Village Center District, it's roughly 50 acres of non-contiguous parcels, the most that could fit is a community center size. And so if, if the survey came out and people said they want a regional shopping center in Village Center, that's probably impossible.
No, but think about it this way, and you'll, you'll see this as planning, right? We have a FAR that limits the density, right? The Florida area ratio will limit the FAR, no doubt. But if one of those anchors, and that's why I'm glad that we at least have that one question with regard to use size, right? Because if the max use size is, say, 50,000 or 60,000 square feet, combined with a FAR, you're gonna get something that's reasonable. If we had not even had that question, right? FAR couldn't be all one use, right? It could be 100,000 square foot Harris Teeter, and that could take up your entire parcel. So it's just a matter of, you know, balancing all those elements and to get what you want, right, in the end. And I don't know what that is, what the residents want, but I just thought if there was time and we could slip that in there, it might be useful. Or I'll put this bookmark out there for anyone who's gonna be hanging around for past the election. Just put up some, you know, asterisks around the small retail definition and try to define it, and make sure that it's something you pay attention to, because no one wants to take it out. Everyone seems to love that, that vision, but it's really ambiguous, and it just needs some definition.
Well, there is actually a definition, I can tell you, in the conditional district for a commercial quarter. It says that the majority of tenants should be 5,000 square feet. It, there's, there's a specific word it uses, but it basically, you know, insinuates that, you know, even if there's a 20,000 square foot building, or there's two of them or whatever, that it should be more space than not, should be set out for 5,000 square foot tenants.
Yeah, there's like a proportion between small retail and what we call anchor stores, right? Yeah, I think, I think in my second pass at it, I tried to define some of that stuff, but just be careful, if, you know, just a general note. But that was it, that was finally, I'm really glad that they figured out how to use the code. And when's the due date? When is it supposed, what are you expecting?
October 7th at midnight is when it closes.
So I think, if anything, we maybe send some reminders out in a blast, whatever way we can on a continuous basis.
Reminders for all.
We have, we have all set up.
They are picked.
All of them were set up for, to send out a paper talk.
And COG managed all of that? You guys didn't have to put stickers on anything, or do anything?
No, they did all of that. Well, we're sending out the reminders.
Yeah, we're, we set all the other stuff up, but, you know, we didn't have to do the mail-in or anything.
So I saw the QR code. Is that linked to the actual code?
Yes, that'll go to the same website. I think you still have to input your household.
Oh, I was gonna say, so it's not an individual QR for every.
Right, I don't think she was able to set that.
I was gonna say, that was pretty advanced.
No, 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 that will just go to the website, and you still have to enter code on the survey.
Your individual code, okay, great. That was it, thank you.
Anything else, planning report? Thank you, Rohit. Next up, I need approval of the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye. Please.
We're, we're gonna do it in unfinished.